The Travis County Commissioners Court. It is May 11, 2021 at 9:05 a.m. We're meeting here at 700 Lovaco with Commissioner Trevillion and Commissioner Howard, and we have Commissioner Gomez and Commissioner Shea joining us remotely. Mayor, I will hand it off over to you.
Judge, good to see you again and the court. We're going to convene the Austin City Council portion of this special call meeting on May 11 at 9:05. We're going to, we have a forum present as well. And when we get to questions, I think today we start at District 10, going down to District 1. And I remind everybody to ask one question. Judge, turn it back to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Do we have any callers for the Travis County Public Comment portion?
No, sir.
All right, thanks, Larry. All right, well, let's start with our briefings. And again, we'll kind of go in the same order as always. So we're going to get a briefing from Dr. Esq. and Assistant City Manager Hayden Howard. And then we'll go through members of the Commissioners Court with one question each, and then members of the City Council and the mayor with one question each, and then we'll close. So without anything else, Dr. Esq., if you're ready, please go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. Let me turn that on. Can y'all see my slides okay?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Again, thank you for the opportunity to update the court and City Council on our COVID-19 response. This is an update of our COVID-19 progress towards herd immunity. You can see that we have about 38% of individuals in Travis County, that's of the entire population, who are fully vaccinated, 13% who are partially vaccinated. Additionally, we have 6% who have had confirmed COVID-19, and an estimated additional 13% based upon the UT modeling consortium's estimates for actual disease burden in the community. So as you can see, we're making significant progress. We've seen the portion of the pie closed down for those who are still vulnerable, which is at least 30%. Again, when I say at least 30%, that's because this graph or this pie chart assumes no overlap between those who've had COVID disease and those who've been vaccinated. While there's certainly some overlap, it's not clear how much overlap it is. Looking at our internal numbers, actually, there does not seem to be a lot of overlap between those two. So as a reminder, we still want folks who've had COVID-19 to get the vaccine. The vaccine does provide broader immunity, and certainly there is still benefit in folks getting the vaccine even if they've had COVID-19. But this puts us at an important point because we're starting to approach that 70% mark of combined disease and vaccination. So we may start to see some significant changes when it comes to disease trend as other jurisdictions have seen that we've been at a similar point. Probably the first to reach this sort of more than 50% population that has shared data is Israel. We're also seeing a similar impact in El Paso, who had a 50% drop in new COVID cases after they exceeded 50% of the population vaccinated. So again, our hope is that we will see continued downward trend in our COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations. But overall, success really depends on all of us who are eligible to get that vaccine so that we can progress towards normal. The FDA certainly helped us out yesterday in that mission to get our population vaccinated by expanding the EUA for the Pfizer vaccine to include 12- to 15-year-olds. So I want to talk a little bit about this. I know there's a lot of questions in the community about the safety and efficacy in this age group. So basically, as a part of this, they did a randomized placebo-controlled trial of 2,600 children. About half of them received the actual vaccine, half of them received a placebo. They found that those who received the vaccine had similar side effects to older children, pain in the arm where they got the injection, tiredness, fever, muscle aches, joint pain, headache. Those symptoms generally lasted one to three days, and were certainly, as in older people, more common following that second dose. Regarding efficacy, as we discussed earlier in this year, the efficacy piece for the 12- to 15-year-olds was a little bit different than from the original studies in adults. So what they did is they looked at the immune response in the group from 16 to 25 to see if there was a similar immune response for those who were 12 to 15, and in fact, there was. So this was a non-inferiority study, meaning that those immune responses were similar between those two groups. Additionally, they assessed the cases or the efficacy of the vaccine in that 12- to 15-year-old group. They found that in the placebo group, 16 kids developed COVID-19 and zero in the vaccinated group. So the calculated efficacy at this stage is 100%. And, you know, I want to caution that no vaccine is really going to be able to achieve 100%. It's 100% in this group, in this study group. But the bottom line is, it's a very, very effective vaccine and a very safe vaccine. You know, this is a decision that individuals, that parents need to make for their children. I can tell you that last night and this morning, I've been looking for Pfizer vaccine for my 15-year-old son. So I certainly have confidence in the vaccine, and my hope is that many others in the community will as well so that we can get our kids vaccinated and move forward in our quest for herd immunity. This is an update of our new confirmed cases in Travis County. Yesterday, we reported 101 cases. That was after a very low day before of 19 cases. Overall, our moving average is 68, which is a decrease of 23% compared to one week ago. So again, we're continuing that downward direction for the past couple of weeks in terms of new cases, which we're certainly happy to see. There is some variability across the region, however, and we are not seeing as similar drops in some of the more rural areas in central Texas. So again, we not only need to focus on our community, on Austin and Travis County, but we need to ensure that folks outside of the metro are receiving the message and also being encouraged to be vaccinated. Now, this is another of our new admissions to the hospital. Again, the yellow is the moving average. You can see a hook at the very far right of this, and that was our admissions from yesterday, which was 21, which brought our moving average up to 16. We had spent three days under 15, so in that stage-two territory. But, you know, that was Friday through Sunday, but an increase yesterday. Again, that's still a 6% decrease of that moving average as compared to a week ago. So certainly pleased with the overall direction that the emissions are heading, but we'll continue to watch that data this week. I had discussed last week the potential of moving into stage-two this week. With this change, yesterday, we'll have to watch the data for a bit longer before we make a determination about transition of stages. This is an update of our hospitalization data. So again, the blue is hospitalizations, orange are ICU, and the gray are ventilators being used for COVID-19. Our hospitalizations yesterday, 109, with a moving average of 107. That's a 16% decrease as compared to one week ago. Our ICU utilization yesterday, 31, with a moving average of 37. That's down 20% from last week. Our ventilator use, 17, with a moving average of 20, which is a 20% decrease as well for ventilator use. So again, overall, good direction. We'd like to see it dropping a bit faster, but certainly some of the lowest numbers that we've seen since October. Looking at the overall picture of the state, the state reported 2,200 hospitalizations statewide for COVID-19. That's the lowest number since mid-June. So certainly, overall progress being made in the battle against COVID-19 across the state, which we're certainly pleased to see. This is an update of our hospitalizations by age group. There's a couple of things I want to point out here. You see that the older age groups are generally trending in a downward direction this week. And when we look at the 80-plus age group and the 70- to 79 age group, significant decreases from where we were 10 weeks ago or so. The thing that concerns me the most about this graph is the gray line. That's our 10- to 19-year-old age group. This is the highest percentage of hospitalizations that we've seen since this pandemic began by a factor of 50%, 50% higher than the previous highest. So there's a couple of factors involved in that. Number one, we've had lower overall admissions this week, but also because there's a significant increase in the number of individuals hospitalized in that age group. Again, that number is seen here on the right column. An overall decrease in the number of hospitalizations last week, but an increase from five to 13 for admissions in that 10- to 19-year-old age group. There have been eight individuals between three years old and 17 years old who were hospitalized in the past week, including a 10-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old, a 14-year-old, and two 15-year-olds. So again, we have to remember that when we look at the vulnerability of the community, while that vulnerability is decreasing quickly, the vulnerability in children is not because they don't have access to vaccine yet. We've just opened up the window for 12- to 15-year-olds, so hopefully, that's going to impact the trends that we see here. But this is exactly what was seen in Israel. When the adult population was vaccinated, they saw a surge in young people, in teenagers in particular. So this is a warning for parents. Even though the overall threat is decreasing in the community, their children are still vulnerable, and they're going to be vulnerable until they're vaccinated. So it is important, despite the fact that the risk for hospitalization and death is much lower for this age group, it certainly happens, and it happened 13 times in the past week for kids under the age of 19. So please, please continue to advocate for vaccinations now to include children as young as 12. This is an update of our hospitalizations by race and ethnicity. We can see a significant increase in the hospitalizations for our Latinx community and an increase in the percentage for our African-American community. When we look at the details of where those changes were, so again, these are hospitalizations by numbers of individuals in each category, we see that there was an increase from 52 to 55 in our Latinx community, a big drop in our white and non-Hispanic community members who were hospitalized, and no change in the number of individuals from the African-American community hospitalized. So the big change this week is that significant drop by about a third in our white, non-Hispanic community members who were hospitalized last week. So again, we're continuing to see disproportionate impacts in our communities of color. I will say that seven of the eight individuals under the 17 years old or younger were from communities of color. So again, it is striking our communities of color more dramatically, and we need to continue to focus efforts in those communities, which ACM Hayden Howard will discuss a bit later. Now, this is our overall positivity by week. You can see that last week, we're reporting currently a 3.5% positivity, so a decrease from the previous two weeks, which were at 3.9%. Again, we are continuing to head towards that 3% mark that we'd really like to be under, and I think that will coincide with a significant decrease in activity. So we'll continue to monitor that. This is the breakdown by race and ethnicity. Our Latinx community dropped from 6.2% to 5.4% last week. Our African-American community dropped from 5.2% to 4.7%. Our Asian-American community had an increase, 3.4% to 4.2%. And no change in our white, non-Hispanic community, who has been at 3% for both weeks. This is that positivity broken down by age group. We see some clustering happening here. You can see that the old and the young groups, so that less than one and 1 to 9, as well as our 70- to 79- and 80-plus age groups are clustered around that 2% mark. We see that our 60- to 69-year-olds are right about 3%. We had a significant drop in that 10- to 19 age group in terms of positivity. But still, the individuals who are that 20- to 29, to 50- to 59, are still clustered around that 5% mark. Again, it's important that we continue to test. This is how we better control the disease, by identifying those who have COVID-19, by having them stay at home until they're better, and that reduces the transmission risk to other people. Again, as a warning for young people, particularly individuals younger than 30, these can be cold symptoms. These can be a minor sore throat, a stuffy nose, you know, cold-like symptoms. So it may not be dramatic in these age groups, and it's important that if individuals have those symptoms, they get tested right away to help prevent transmission to others. Look at the positivity broken down by school age. In our school-age children group, this is the data from 5'2" to 5'8". Our high school group, 3.9% positivity, 5.4% from middle school. Again, continuing the trend of those two being over the community average as well as the elementary and preschool being under, 1.6% and 2.2%. So again, we continue to see clusters in our middle schools and high schools. They continue to be related to athletics activities as well as after-school social activities. So again, it's important that we use caution in those areas to avoid not only disease but also significant impact on those athletic activities. This is an update of our long-term care facility dashboard. We continue to see a decrease in the activity there as compared to several weeks ago. Four cases in the last 14 days, 20 in the last 28. The overwhelming majority of nursing homes and assisted-living facilities have zero cases. So again, it is clear that we have herd immunity in those facilities to a large extent. We have two facilities, I believe, that have more than one or two cases. So very, very small numbers, even when we do see cases at those facilities. Again, we remain in stage-three for now. Our hope is that we will continue to see a decrease in admissions to the hospital and that we will fall under that 15 threshold again with the possibility of transitioning to stage-two later this week or next week, depending on that data. I do anticipate that we will revise the health authority rules in conjunction with a transition to stage-two, which will relax some of those guidelines that we have sent out previously. So again, we will update that once we transition to stage-two. With that, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Hayden Howard.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our nurses. Nurses Week started May 6, ends on the 12th. We've had a group of our nurses that have been involved this entire time but have really played a key role in providing so many vaccines in our community. And so we definitely want to acknowledge our nurses in the department, ones that have volunteered with us, as well as all of our other partners that have nurses. So if you happen to see a nurse, just tell them Happy Nurses Week. I definitely told my mom Happy Mother's Day, as well as Happy Nurses Week this weekend. Next slide. When we look at the dashboard, we're seeing 387,000 vaccines that have been provided in our community. And when we start to look at the demographic data, the Asian population has received 17.28% of these vaccines. African-Americans have received 7.7%. Our Hispanic population has received 31.5%. And our white population has received 37.5%. And so just kind of really keep in mind, this is Austin Public Health. It also includes the Coda efforts as well as community cares data is what we typically do track. Next slide. You will start to see a change in our dashboard update schedule. So starting on the 15th, you will no longer see an update on Saturdays and Sunday. I would like to really acknowledge our epidemiology staff as well as the data entry folks, et cetera, because they have been working tirelessly every day of the week since February of 2020. You know, we were able to let them observe a few holidays along the way, but we have always continued to update our dashboards. And so this is going to be a change. But what will happen is, is that on Mondays, you will see the update. Now, the two dashboards that it affects is the COVID-19 surveillance and it is the staging one. The other ones have always only been updated once a week, so this will not affect them as well, and it will not also affect our other vaccine dashboard. Next slide. Austin Public Health has provided 300,000 first and second doses of our vaccine. Last week, our team was able to provide 13,000 vaccines, continuing to work with the childcare and school staff as well as tracking the senior population with first and second doses. And then we typically share the information from the Texas Department of State Health Services at 107,788. And so that is inclusive of all providers in Travis County. Next slide. We are starting a pilot partnership with AISD this week. As you all may be aware, AISD has had several food distribution events. And so we have selected four campuses that our mobile team is going to be working with them this week. These are the campuses listed, and this is based upon being able to look at a north and a south location as well as Title I schools. And then lastly, looking at where there's the largest demand. These are the sites where, according to AISD, they have more people come to these campuses. And so our staff are going to continue to, you know, work with them. You know, we'll continue to have our, you know, our other pilots, et cetera. Next slide. This is an event that we have coming up on the 16th of May. We will also be at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church. As you also know, you know, we have really, really transitioned to our neighborhood model, and these are examples. This past Saturday, we were at Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church, providing vaccines. And so our team will continue to be in the different locations, and we'll be able to share with you like I'm going to share on this next slide. On our website, you will see that, you know, we're starting to have a snapshot where folks could go on to our website. They'll be able to see where all of our partners are. Now, this was a snapshot of what we had of last Friday. And so we know it's definitely going to be changing. You have the ability to, you know, to go onto the website and be able to look and see where we are as far as the hours, locations, et cetera. We are still doing appointments, but we're also really emphasizing that we have, all of our clinics are walk-up clinics. Our other partners as well are doing walk-up clinics. And so when you're on the site and you're looking for that information, you will notice that as well. Next slide. What we wanted to be able to bring today, and this is just a snapshot from May 1 through May 7, looking at the folks that had scheduled appointments versus walk-up appointments, and then the walk-up percentage. And so we know that, you know, we're still seeing more folks with scheduled appointments as opposed to walk-up appointments, but the process is working really well. Our teams have established a really nice way to be able to move people through the process. And then that way, you know, folks don't spend as long at the locations. And so our team will continue to refine those efforts, but we'll continue to have these types of processes, especially for the ones that are, you know, open and their walk-up appointments. We know that we will have certain locations where we are in partnership, you know, with locations. So for example, with the board and care facilities, our staff are going there and working, for example, with Travis County DAF Services, for example. And so those are examples of actual closed pods where we're working with a specific population in that space. And so our team will continue to work through that and make sure that we are addressing the needs in our community. Next slide. This is, we wanted to share this with you. The Centers for Disease Control has now taken over the Vaccine Finder, and it is now vaccines.gov. And so no matter where you are, you can go to your phone and you can text the information and add your zip code, and then it will provide you a list of locations that is near you. And so this service is actually, is operated by the Center for Disease Control and the U.S. Health and Human Services. And so as things move along and things are more, where the providers have registered, et cetera, they are also tracking that as well. And it's also tracked at the state level by the Texas Department of Health Services. Next slide. As Dr. Esq. shared earlier, our vaccinations for 12 years and older, as you all know, Austin Public Health does receive the Moderna, which is approved for 18 years and older. However, we are going to be working with our partners as they are providing the Pfizer vaccine through the Travis County drive-through sites with UT Health. But we're also kind of reminding folks about the Walgreens, CVS, and HEB. One of the things our staff are finalizing is that we have a Shots for Tox clinic that is in North and South Austin, as well as partners with a Vaccine for Children provider. And so our staff work very closely with them, make sure they're trained and et cetera. And so between those two entities, the Shots for Tox- And so between um those two entities, the Shots for Tox and the Vaccine for Children Provider, um they will be able to provide more of the Pfizer in our community. And so um you'll see that on our map. Um, we will um list that information as well. So everyone really can will have um a better bird's eye of where Pfizer is available, time, et cetera. Uh, next slide. Wanted to spend um a little time on the incentives. Um, and Austin Public Health is continuing to um to work on a process. But what we have really been encouraging business owners um to do in our community um is to really just basically step up and say, you know, you are willing um to be able to, you know, whether it's a coupon, um, you know, a discount off of a service or something like that. Our hope is is that business owners will take that initiative um to be able to offer those um coupons, et cetera, in our community. Um, we are also working with our grassroots organizations um because as we know, the grassroots organizations that the city has our contracts with, which are seven, um and United Way has their contracts with. Um, those groups um have started to meet. The United Way has joined our session with our grassroots organizations. And now um we're going to pull all of them together is our next step. And so basically, having them to look at what type of incentives that we could put together um with the grassroots organizations, you know, they are able to um receive those solicitations um from the public um as opposed to the City of Austin. The other thing is is, you know, we are just encouraging employers to allow um their time um some a time off for their vaccine appointments that will not overall affect their leave time. We know that the ability to kind of go and get a vaccine. But we also think what is also important for employers is to also allow um that time. So if an individual has, you know, any kind of side effects and they're not feeling well after they've taken either the first or second vaccine, allowing them um that time and looking at how you could put in place uh a process where they are not um using their sick leave or their vacation. So it's just incentives like that that we know um will definitely be able to help folks make a decision um as we are just working very closely with our outreach partners um in our in our grassroots organization. Next slide. We are in um partnership um and, you know, we're really excited about our um initiative hashtag TakeTheShot, A T X. And so um, you know, working with our um with our soccer team here, we are very excited about that. And we have actually um put together a a couple of of PSAs. Uh, we should be able to run those. Uh, we shared them with the county, so we would be able to do so. So hopefully, this is going to work. Um, are y'all able to run the PSA?
Good question. Um, media, are y'all, y'all have that ready to go or you want to try that at the break? Paul, what do you think? Sounds like we may need a few minutes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Um, uh, la- last slide. Um, I would like to um take this time to um to introduce to you. Some of you have probably met her um in her uh role as Assistant Director. Others of you have worked very closely with her thus far. Uh, this is Adrian Sterrup. Adrian Sterrup um is the Interim Director of Austin Public Health. And so Adrian um is going to be presenting next week um moving forward with with Dr. S. Scott um and and providing you the updates. And so I just wanted to make sure to introduce her today, let you know that, you know, we're going to be transitioning over to her. I will continue to attend the meetings um and definitely be um a part of the conversation. But I wanted to introduce um Adrian Sterrup to you today. Adrian, do you um have any comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you. Just good morning, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Well, that um concludes our uh presentation. Um, so we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, I think just the only update I would have from the Travis County Vaccine side is uh I I'm really excited about the map that you've put together. Um, and so this weekend, again, at the Expo Center, we're going to have the Pfizer vaccine Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think it's from nine to five. It'll be a drive-through. And, you know, as soon as the CDC says we can give it to officially give it to twelve-year-olds uh to fifteen-year-olds, we will do so. And Dr. S. Scott, maybe that's already the case. I thought it was sort of questionable this morning, but. Um, and then we also have the teams that Constable Morales and Chief Bailey are leading that are going to different locations around Eastern Travis County. Hopefully, we can get those locations to you ahead of time so that you can add them to the map. With that, I will pass it on to uh Commissioner Gomez, if you are there and if you have any questions for the team.
Uh, I don't have any questions, Judge. I think I'm very um, the reports that we're getting are promising. So um forward to us continuing to make progress. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Shea.
Good morning, everyone. And my usual thanks to um everyone who's involved in this. Um, we know you've been putting in just incredibly long hours. Hopefully, you're starting to get a little bit more of your lives back as as we're making more progress on on vaccinations. Um, I I heard a story the other day that uh and I think I I think I'm remembering this right, but um I think they were saying that some somewhere close to fifty percent of people who have had COVID are experiencing ongoing effects. I don't I don't I don't know that they were saying that that it was fifty percent having the long COVID. Um, but I personally know someone who is head of a major health corporation who had access to the finest medical care on the planet and who uh is suffering months and months later from very serious long COVID. Um, can you just talk a little bit about that? And is that that fifty percent statistic ac- accurate?
Uh, Commissioner, I think that that number is high. I can certainly look at the latest data and and get back to y'all next week on uh the percentage for for long COVID. Uh, you know, I I I think we all have to be very cautious about what we know and what we don't know about the long-term implications. Uh, we are certainly seeing data emerge, which raises concern about the long-term implications to include uh brain injury uh in the form of depression, anxiety uh as a result of COVID. Um, you know, people, particularly when we talk about younger people, uh, you know, they always raise the concern, well, you know, they don't really have a bad course of illness, except for when they do, except for when they are hospitalized, except for when you sort out later that there's anxiety and depression associated with that infection. You can't take that piece back. Uh, the the side effects from the vaccine, sore arm, muscle aches, you know, tiredness for a day or two is nothing. It's similar to what you get with the flu shot. Uh, there should not be this much controversy about getting this vaccine. Uh, it was very thoroughly studied. It is proven to be even safer and more efficacious than the initial studies indicated. Um, it is really something that that we do need to do. Uh, and we have to realize again that not only do we have the implications from the COVID illness itself, but as I said before, you have the potential for reinfection. Uh, looking at our data for Travis County alone, the reinfection rate is about four times that of the breakthrough rate for those who've been vaccinated. Ninety-six breakthrough cases out of more than six hundred thousand represents a point zero one percent chance of of uh COVID nineteen after infection so far. Uh, three hundred and seventy-nine reinfection cases confirmed. Um, so that's that's why we want to stress the importance of getting the COVID vaccine even if you've had the disease. Um, but our hope is you get it before so that you can avoid the the acute illness, but also the long-term potential consequences.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Trevillion.
First, I would like to commend you all for uh for the work that you've done to um to plan for and reach out into um historically undeserved uh communities. Uh, I know that you've done a a lot of great work because I've watched you do a lot. Um, as we as we look at the map, I think that this is a a very useful tool. And and I appreciate the map. And I know that things are improving. I just I still want to redouble our efforts until we get through uh the Juneteenth process. And hopefully, we can uh can effectively um get as many shots into arms as possible. Uh, uh, as we talk about how we incorporate the twelve to fifteen um year olds, I'm interested in making sure that we that we do uh work through our community schools and we do work through our public schools. Those are places where kids and families are used to going. Um, I I uh and I might be missing some from the list, but it seems to me that uh community schools provide an incredible opportunity for us to go into neighborhoods. And if we're able uh to send uh mobile teams over to those places, I think it can be very successful. So schools and community centers because uh because they do exist where infrastructure doesn't exist. And then churches, I'm 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 glad that we use Greater Mount Zion. I think that uh they they run a fa- fantastic operation over there. But but let me just say this. Uh, you if you remember HB six and AB HB seven, they specifically took souls to poles away from the community because it is so effective. I think that we really need to redouble our efforts specifically with churches. And there are several churches that are large churches that have significant populations. Uh, and I imagine a number of people still need to be vaccinated. Uh, you know, Greater Mount Zion is great, St. James, Mount Zion, David Chapel, Mount Sinai, Wesley United Methodist, St. Mary's in Flugerville. I I think that uh that is a very effective way to get to communities working at churches. And I think that's been demonstrated uh by voting as well as as other things that happen there. I want us to make sure that we're redoubling our efforts there. And and um and I'm also wondering uh whether we have been able to add any service providers from trusted communities. When we talk to the N double in um in um A A C P or the Urban League or the Black Leadership Collective, um African American Harvest Foundation, Central Texas Area Health Initiative, want to make sure that we're reaching out to folks who have trusted relationships in the community and make sure that they're working in schools and community centers and churches to maximize the access that we have to those communities. So I guess my question is, uh, how have we incorporated them? Or what is our progress on incorporating those those entities?
Oh, so Commissioner Trevillion, um in March, um we kicked off our um faith-based initiative. Um, that team actually um stood up in April of last year to just address the testing, et cetera, um to work with those facilities. They have pivoted, um and so now they are working with those faith-based churches. Um, you know, the Great Mount Zion, the um St. James, um we were there um uh last month. Um, and um so basically, what those churches are doing is collaboratively, we are assigning a location. And so all of those folks are referring folks. So for example, this weekend, they were referred to, um several churches came together, and they referred over to Great Mount Zion. Last month, the same thing collectively, we're able to refer in to to St. James. And so um that model seems to be, you know, working um pretty well. Um, we have talked with um Pastor Coesum out in Flugerville. Um, and they're willing to um allow us to to be in that space. And so as we transition from the Flugerville Recreation Center, um we'll be transitioning over to um locations like that. The Urban League is one of our um partners that we are, one of our grassroots organizations that are working with us in this space. And so um we have that, we have seven um organizations um that are working very closely with us. So we, you know, we're we're moving through that process. Um, as far as the the Juneteenth um um process, our staff have identified several locations um where we would be able to um provide vaccines and and are going to collaborate that and work with our working group um that typically meets on Fridays at noon. So we are able to have events leading up to Juneteenth and then make sure um we're providing um vaccines at at several locations. And so that will be on our maps. And so um, you know, we're always, you know, looking at ways um to improve. Our mobile team i- are the ones that are at the schools um providing those services. Um, and then for the pop-up clinics, it's a combination um of our folks that typically will be working at the larger sites like your Dale Valley or your Burger to transition um to be at, for example, how we were um going to be at Givens Park um and at the um Catholic Church this weekend. And so those efforts, we're able to shift folks around and um be at those neighborhood models. And so we are continuing um to do that.
Thank you so much for your thoughtful work. And um I I would I also would like to make sure that we are are working with uh Cap Metro to make sure that when we do have sites and we're not sure that we have um that that folks can get to those sites, that we work with Cap Metro to see how they can uh help us facilitate moving people.
Um, actually, Commissioner Trevillion, they have been an outstanding partner. Um, they um started with us, um I'm going to say probably back in February. Um, if you just give them a call and let them know where your um appointment time schedule is for your vaccine, they are providing um free transportation to individuals to um to be able to get to um, you know, any of our kind of sites where their routes are. So that has been a really good um um partnership with Capitol Metro.
All right. Thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner. Commissioner Howard.
Thank you very much. I had a quick question about the shots for homebound individuals. Um, but do you think it's time that we could add capacity to that program? Um, if we had like firefighters or folks that were able and knowledgeable and trained to give shots? Do you do you think the need exists?
Um, I would say that, you know, we we have been able to keep up with the demand. Um, our teams have um, you know, have really been able to go out and provide that service. Um, and as you know, we have pivoted. And so whenever they call in to request a service, if they have additional folks um that they would like to receive the vaccine, if they just let us know, our staff will go prepared with additional vaccine to provide that um in their homes. Um, we we have been working with the um with with the fire um um with the Fire Department. Um, and, you know, we'll continue to work with them. Um, and so, you know, that I think we're we're probably at a point where we're just kind of looking at, you know, how we are still needing to pivot a little more to our neighborhood model. Um, and if they have the available staff, we have been working with retirees um from the Fire Department. And so they have been able to help us kind of during kind of this leg of the process. And so uh we can definitely be able to get more of the data about um folks that are calling in um and scheduling the the um um through three-one-one and our staff for those homebound appointments. And then Adrian can bring that back on next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, I will pass it on uh over to the mayor and city council.
Judge, thank you. We're going to start District Ten, work our way up to District One. And uh uh each of us get uh one question. Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. Um, lots of mothers are really happy to hear about the twelve to fifteen-year-old Lots of mothers are really happy to hear about the 12 to 15-year-old opportunity. I would appreciate some clarity. Again, you know, is it officially authorized? How do folks access it in Austin? You know, it's 12 to 15-year-olds, so clarifying that you still need a parent with you. We, as APH, have mostly had Moderna, to my knowledge, and this is just for Pfizer. So, you know, what are the options for getting the Pfizer and and how do we do that in an orderly manner so that everyone who wants that shot can have it? But I just feel like we need some clarity for the parents who've been anxiously awaiting this for for a long time. And I'm not sure, you you mentioned the 100% effectiveness, which is awesome, and we should definitely have some messaging on that that's what we know at this point. But but we need to be able to tell people they're available here or there or whatnot, and here's where to look for Pfizer options.
Councilmember Alter, yes, it is approved for 12 to 15-year-olds. However, it may take a day or a few days for those that have online registration to allow them to register. I know that because I've tried to register last night and this morning for my son. CVS still has it at at 16 years old. So my advice is, look at the map that that Stephanie talked about. People are looking for Pfizer. Pfizer is the only vaccine approved for that 12 to 17-year-old group. The others are 18 plus. So Pfizer is what what folks want to look for. The CVSs have them, HEB, and there are other providers that that have them as well. I did want to clarify something else that I misspoke about earlier, and that's reinfection versus breakthrough on Commissioner Shady's question. There's four times the number of people who have had reinfections. It's actually 33 times the rate for reinfection as compared to breakthrough infections due to this much smaller denominator. So again, even folks who've had COVID, even 12 to 15-year-olds who've had COVID, need to get their COVID shot. It is very, very effective. And again, it's more evidence that the vaccine is is much more effective at preventing infection than the disease itself.
I think it'd be really helpful if as part of the messaging that you send out to us to share if we could get, you know, the appropriate messaging that we need to get out for that age group and sending people where they need to go instead of all of us reinventing that, just so there's some clarity in the messaging, that would be very much appreciated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge, before we go on to District 9, do you have a PSA that's ready for us now?
We do. We're gonna hit play now, I think.
Hey, Austin, let's come together and protect our community. In Texas, everyone over the age of 16 is now eligible to get the COVID-19 vaccine.
We're not seeing it, though.
Right at each other's head.
Take the shot, ATX.
Take the shot, ATX. Take the shot, ATX.
You're gonna play one more time.
Hey, Austin, let's come together and protect our community.
We still don't see it.
That's not on the screen.
To get the COVID-19 vaccine. Together, we can see a bright at each other's head. Take the shot, ATX. Take the shot, ATX. Take the shot, ATX.
Sounds good, though.
So the public can see it. The bad news is, I guess y'all could not see it. Is that correct?
Maybe just send us the link and then we can watch it and also promote it on social.
It looks really good.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Judge. It sounds good. All right, we're going to continue on, then Councilmember Tovo.
That's great. I'm really glad I'm really glad that the PSAs are continuing to move forward. I think those are really effective. I love the one that that you all showed us last week, and I look forward to seeing this one with the soccer with MLS. Councilmember Alter really asked the question that that's on my mind this morning, and I'm still not entirely clear on on what on what the answer is, at least for the county. So I, too, have been sort of up all night trying to check CVS, HEB, all the others. None are none are updated, as Dr. Esq. I think you indicated. And so maybe Judge Brown or or Dr. Esq., could you help me understand there was a passing comment to that with regard to the weekend for the county drive-through sites? What what's the situation there? And do you know if any of the walk-up sites at this point, are there other walk-up sites that that have adjusted their eligibility? It's not clear to me kind of whether whether it's just the online platforms haven't haven't made that shift or or if the sites themselves, some of those that are doing walk-up with Pfizer, are also not doing that shift. So I'm sorry, those were all jumbled into one, but it's the same basic question.
Yeah. So I'll say what I know about Travis County, then Dr. Esq., you can go. So this weekend, we're going to have three days of Pfizer at the Expo Center. So it's, you know, northeast Travis County, where the rodeo often is held. It's, I think, 20 minutes from downtown. It's about a 12-minute drive from Maynor, Decker Lane, and right by Decker Lake. Yeah. So it's it's a, you know, easy, easy enough drive, especially on the weekend, won't be any traffic to get out there. And it is set up as a drive-through, and we're doing it from, I think, nine to five all three days. Last weekend and the weekend before, it was all no appointment needed. That is my hope and goal, that it will be the same way this weekend. The team that is running it has not officially said that, but that's certainly what I'm urging them to do, to make it a drive-up without appointments. And that is what I know. And then these teams that we have also have the Pfizer vaccine, and so I think they would do the same thing, that they would open it up to people who are, oh, and so Expo and everything that we're giving out will be 12 and up. If the CDC says we can do it, we're going to do that. These teams that we have going to individual, like apartment complexes and schools in eastern Travis County that led by Constable Morales and Chief Bailey will also have those same rules, and they obviously would not be appointment-driven. They would just be, we're here, ready to give you a shot. Dr. Esq., do you have anything to add to that?
And just to clarify, Judge Brown, those teams will all adjust to the new to the new guidance. So those mobile teams going out to apartment complexes will also be doing 12 and up.
Yes. Yep. Anywhere that we, if we're allowed to do it with Pfizer, we will do that.
And is is there any question about whether you're allowed to do it? I guess that was really the ambiguity.
So, Dr. Esq., you can clear this up. I thought I saw in the New York Times thing, I was just reading, some like panel of the CDC had to still bless it or something, but maybe that's an old article I was looking at.
I I'm certainly not aware of that. From my perspective, it has been approved. I I don't think there's any reason to wait any longer. So 12 to 15, and I I think, you know, to answer the the overall question, generally speaking, the walk-up sites are going to be easier to adjust because they already have consent forms. They already have a process for for those minors who are going to 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 get vaccinated. So it's going to be the online platforms that are going to take a bit longer to to readjust. We'll try to follow up with CBS and HEB today to get an idea on what the timeline looks for for that adjustment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alice?
Thanks, Mayor. My line of thinking was very close to where Councilmember Alter and Tovo are, and so I won't rehash it, but in some of the information that you can get us, it might be helpful for parents to know if they need to bring some sort of ID or documentation, just since I know the adults, you know, they had to make sure they knew who was who, at least. So that information might be helpful. Do you know how schools may track who's been vaccinated? I know they care about other vaccinations that happen at certain ages. And so even though they probably won't be announcing who is and is not vaccinated, parents may just really appreciate knowing how many of their their students' peers have have been able to get vaccinated, just so they can help tell their kids, you know, when to wear a mask, when not to wear a mask. Do you know how schools will be handling that information?
I don't know at this stage. I anticipate that that we will want to identify vaccination rates in schools, so de-identified information. So we'll work with our school districts on that. We do that for other vaccinations. DSHS does that for other vaccinations to identify risk. I I don't imagine that we're going to see a requirement in the short term because it's still under EUA. When we see transition from EUA to full approval for for this vaccine and others, I think we will see more schools, more universities, more workplaces, particularly in the healthcare industry, that will require it for for their their people.
That's really helpful. I know we had seen some transmission among extracurriculars earlier on, and so I hope I hope we can avoid that moving forward. And I'll just I'll just say very briefly before passing the microphone, I would really appreciate if there was some consideration for the Burger Center to have an accommodation for people who ride the bus or use a bike to get around. We've gotten some questions about that being the closest location for some constituents, and and they're trying to find locations that are bike up and walk up that they can get to. So I would really love if there was a way to to make that work.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Poole?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any questions, just thanks to all our staff for their work.
Okay. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. As many of us have heard, Prop. passed, and our city manager and his team are working hard to respond to how this will affect our unhoused neighbors. We'll hear more from him later today. But in the context of that and considering how CDC guidelines have in some ways inhibited how we can help or even count our neighbors experiencing homelessness, I do have a question for Dr. Esq. And that is, do you have any recommendations on how the City of Austin's efforts to help our unhoused neighbors move away from unsafe areas will be impacted by CDC guidelines?
Muted.
Can you repeat that one more time?
I sure can. Do you have any recommendations on how the City of Austin's efforts to help our unhoused neighbors move away from unsafe areas will be impacted by current CDC guidelines?
Well, you know, we've had discussions about, you know, how to to deal with with our unhoused population. I I think there's, you know, a lot of ongoing discussion that that does need to occur to ensure that that we can keep people safe, not only from COVID-19, but from from other other issues that that affect them disproportionately. So I don't have any answers at this stage, but certainly look forward to an ongoing conversation.
Would you be able to loop my office and myself into those conversations, please?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you very much, and and welcome, Adrian, if you're still on. We'll look forward to hearing from you next time. So my question is, I just to follow, I appreciate all the information that people have been asking about. And this may be for Dr. Esq. Dr. Esq., can you give us an idea of what you're seeing and or planning for with regard to the variants? I know we're starting to see in other states, at least, the variant from India, variant from other places. So what, is there anything that you can share with us at this point about Austin? I guess the first question is, are we seeing any of these variants yet? Yet. I haven't, I'm not aware, but that's a question for you. And and the second aspect of the question is, what, if anything, can we do to prepare for that eventuality?
Councilmember, we are seeing variants, as is the the rest of the country, 161 variants so far, most of which are the the UK variant. We have seen others, including the Brazilian variant. We are working on a way to report that publicly so that the the community can know which variants are impacting us the most at this stage. I I think the the best way to plan for that right now is is surveillance and getting vaccinated, and of course, continuing those protections that we have in place, including masking. Again, if if we do these things in combination, if we continue the protections, the masking in particular, while we continue that vaccination effort, it decreases the risk of of these these variants taking hold here. It allows us to to impact transmission more effectively. I I think the long-term issue is is going to be a bigger challenge. As we see hotspots like India happening, you know, we can expect to see other hotspots in other densely populated places with, you know, relatively poor healthcare infrastructure like Sao Paulo, like Nigeria, other places that tend to be the focus of the emergence of variants for other diseases. So I think we have to work hard. Mexico City would be another example. We have to work hard. And again, as soon as we achieve the goals locally, we've got to pivot our efforts to vaccinate the rest of the planet. Otherwise, this is going to continue to be a challenge for us.
So, Dr. Esq., there's varying degrees of information out there about the different variants and the effectiveness of the vaccines. Can you just zero in on us, zero in for us on the variants that we need to be most concerned about vis-à-vis the effectiveness of the vaccines?
Councilmember, the challenges at this stage, many of the variants, we we don't have a great deal of information regarding the efficacy because we haven't really seen the the two mix, vaccinated people and and the variants, in a way that allows us to effectively calculate. Certainly, some of the data suggested that the South African variant was of particular concern, eluding current vaccination effort. Even in circumstances where there's decreased efficacy, so decreased protection from getting the infection, we we are seeing ongoing efficacy in terms of decreasing the risk of hospitalization and death. We can expect that small changes to the 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 proteins of of the the virus may still allow people to get the infection, but the the vaccine effort, the immune response, because it is comprehensive, will provide some ongoing protection. Again, this is one of the critical things to monitor around the globe so that that boosters can be manufactured to address those new variants that that may have changed enough to to be impactful in terms of the the overall vaccine efficacy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kassar?
Remember, back in March, there was a goal set here.
Can you speak up?
Sorry, can you hear me better now? You having trouble? Okay, I'm going to call in on my phone.
All right, well, Councilmember Kassar calls in. Councilmember Renteria?
Yes, Mayor. Sorry about this. Got a little headache this morning, but I want to just thank all the nurses that have helped helped us to reach this this milestone that we're at right now. But we still need a lot of help from our from our citizens. You know, if we're going to open up pools and our rec centers, y'all are going to have to take a vaccine shot. We cannot open up, you know, our facilities with with this high of infection rate that's going on. So y'all need to take that vaccine shot. That's all I'm going to say today is, please take the vaccine shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kassar, are you with us? Maybe not quite yet. Councilmember Fuentes?
Thank you. So my question, I guess, is around the map that we have created. Is that map, I I missed the part of whether or not that map is live yet on the website on the vaccine locations?
Yes, the the map is live on the website.
Yes, the the map is live on the website. And the team will, as soon as they receive the updated information from the partners, they will update it again based upon, you know, as soon as we receive that information.
Okay, yeah, that'd be super helpful because I know that the location, I'm a little concerned about our efforts in Southeast, given the recent changes. You know, Central Health is moving their Burleson Vaccine Clinic, they're relocating that to Fluberville. We've relocated the Cota Vaccine Operation to the Expo Center. And so that leaves our Montapolis community, our Dove Springs community, with one standing vaccine clinic at Southeast Public Library. And so I know that those targeted efforts that we're doing with the mobile vaccine program and in partnership with our with the Apartment Association or the apartments that you'll be targeting, that'll get us into into targeted neighborhoods. But without having that information on the map, I'm real concerned that our community is going to miss that information. And they're not going to know that they can just go around the corner and and have a vaccine clinic available to them, especially since we've had some a few of our standing clinics relocated. And the question I have is around the incentives. Thank you so much for for looking into that and for providing us an update on those incentives. I really think that is a strategy we're going to have to really lean into. And the information you shared today is a good start. One area that I know other cities are doing is that they're offering a $50 gift card to individuals who drive their friend or their family member to a vaccine clinic. So I really would like for us to explore more opportunities where we have financial assistance provided. And and with the funds that City Council just received from the American Rescue Plan, I think that might give us some flexibility in how we can provide incentives. And so just wanted to share my thoughts on that. And I guess my question around the mentioned grassroots organizations. So can you just elaborate a little bit more on how we might work with those grassroots organizations around the incentives?
Yes, Councilmember Fuentes. I think I'm gonna take a step back because I want to address your concerns about the services south and southeast. Austin Public Health is working with Dell Valley to establish a clinic there several days a week. And so we will be in that space. But in addition to that, Chief Bailey and Constable Morales are looking at sites in that southeast corridor as well. And so that information will be populated on the website for folks to have it as well. And so so just, you know, kind of keep that in mind, and we'll definitely share that with you. Secondly, what, you know, City of Austin employees cannot solicit business owners. And so what what tends to work with our grassroots organizations, there are there are nonprofit organizations. And being able to have them to reach out to partners that they have worked with in the past that may have done, you know, sponsored events for them, et cetera. So but they're looking at, you know, how they can reach out and be able to get those incentives within that organization and or kind of collaboratively in the process. As you know, we have our nonprofits, which are seven, and then United Way has their nonprofits. And so they're really going to collaboratively work together, you know, share forms, share tools, share stories, make sure we're, you know, mapping everything so we'll know where all of them are, et cetera. So that is a part of the work that they will be doing. I can ask staff to do some other research into those types of incentives. And, you know, and then, you know, follow up with you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kassar, are you back with us?
Can y'all hear me okay now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So back in March, I think everyone laid out a plan or goals of trying to get to something like 70 to 80% of adults being vaccinated. Of course, that was well before we had the level of supply we have now, well before we had some of the information we have now. Have we cali are we still holding on to that goal or have we calibrated to a different goal? Where are we at on trying to decide, you know, what we think success looks like for the number of adults we get vaccinated in the community? I think that goal, as you have said, it was what we were trying to get to between end of May, early June, if I remember that back from back in March.
We we have kept that goal in place of of 70%. According to the Texas Department of State Health Services, last I checked, Esqot may have checked this morning, so he can he can correct me, but it was a little over 50% of folks that had received their their vaccines. Because we don't only want to look at what Austin Public Health is doing, we need to make sure that we are concerned with what's happening Travis County wide. And so, you know, the way the state health services has set everything up, all of the hubs, if even now with the change transition between 12 to 15, you know, folks can go to any of those hubs and be able to get their child that vaccine. And so that's the other thing maybe to just, you know, for folks to to keep in mind. Any of those hub providers that are providing Pfizer, they can go to those as well. And Scott, you may want to chime in as well, but that is still our goal.
Thank you, ACM Hayden Howard. So yes, we're a bit over 50% in terms of the total population vaccination, but we're 61 and a half percent of adults in the community who've received at least one dose. So we're making great progress towards that that 70%. I think when we talked about it earlier this year, it was of that 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 adult population. So we are certainly on track to meet that. Again, now that the threshold for vaccine has dropped to age 12, it makes more folks eligible. In our community, it's estimated about 60,000 individuals between ages of 12 and 15. So it's not a huge addition, but certainly an important addition because those individuals aged 12 to 15 have high rates of interaction with others, which makes spread in that group much easier than it is for for older members of our community. So again, we're, as Stephanie mentioned, we are focused on that goal. We we don't want a long tail in that in that pursuit of herd immunity. And that means that all of us, every member of this community, needs to be talking about vaccination. Every church on Sunday needs to be talking about vaccination. Every group that meets needs to be talking about vaccination. There is still persistent and unfortunate myths, misinformation that is still being perpetuated to this day that we have to address in order for people to to get past that that misinformation and get a shot in the arm.
Oh, thank you. And what I was gonna say, I just wanted to check on that goal because my suggestion is that it could be really helpful for people to see what how we are doing on a graph towards getting to a goal. Because I've seen, as we've seen through the entire pandemic, this is a community that can work together when they know what it is we're driving towards. So just like we're trying to bring down hospitalizations to a certain point, bring down cases, if we know that we're at 61 or 62% of adults vaccinated and we're trying to get to 70%, I think it's really helpful for people to see where we are, how many more we need each week, and and that and that goal line. And then as we recognize, we also want to do younger people and teenagers what the goal is there. Because, you know, we know that this only keeps us safe insofar as we all participate. So if you if we can actually, you know, I think the dashboard, for example, still has the percentage of folks of different backgrounds that are over 65, because that was where we were before on vaccinations, was really focused on really just getting the highest priority communities with fewer vaccine. Now that we're in a different place, I think it could be useful in these presentations and on our dashboard, et cetera, to show how close we are to getting to that to that 70% or whatever the goal is now that we're adding people as young as 12 years old. So that's that's my suggestion so that we can so we can tell message to the community how far we have to go and what their goal is.
Thank you. I don't see the Mayor Pro Tem. Oh, there you are. Mayor Pro Tem, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just as well. I didn't have any questions. Thanks for recognizing me.
Okay. Just want to again greet Director Storup. Not an unfamiliar face because she's been with us a couple of times here on on this call. But I also know that she's been absolutely in the trenches over the last 15 months. So not somebody new to this. She's been intimately involved this whole process. I saw that the the president may be announcing today that Uber and Lyft offering free rides to people until July 4th to go get vaccinations. So people should follow that to get additional assistance in getting to vaccinations. Just want to report that and thank the the health equity medical volunteers, the group of physicians that are that are volunteering to to help spread clinical health. They're running a second dose clinic in northeast Austin this weekend with Chief Bailey. And he has the 11. Thank you to the chief for providing that that medical sponsorship position. But also thank you to Austin Voices, Childing, as well as Travis County and Travis County Collaborative. They're meeting next week with AICD District to see if they can supplement and expand the reach of the district's clinical care staff in conjunction with Austin Public Health. Thank you, Assistant Manager Hayden, for that. And then moving that out to to other districts now to really promote the pediatric vaccines. Just a quick question, Dr. Esqot. We're seeing a lot more direction coming out on CDC stuff and a lot more movement with respect to group size. I know that's always been a confusing issue in the city. Do you anticipate taking another look at that kind of group and group sizes and how that relates to numbers and masking and distancing?
Mayor, I we do anticipate relooking at the group size. It is confusing and challenging for people to interpret. So I anticipate when we transition to stage two, that will probably eliminate the language regarding group size and focus more on indoor versus outdoor with differences in spacing for indoor, outdoor, masked or not masked. Certainly, the data that we have point us in the direction that airborne transmission is more of our concern. And I discussed that with y'all a couple of weeks ago. CDC echoed that messaging last week. So in other words, masking is more important, distancing is less important in the in terms of what protections we need to do to transmit disease, particularly indoors. So I do anticipate significant adjustments there, as well as some revisions of the language regarding vaccinated versus unvaccinated workers.
Thank you. Judge, I think those are all the questions that we had as a group. Again, thank you for letting us join you at the joint meeting here today. Thank you to the court. And if you don't have anything else, Judge.
Before you sign off, Mayor, I had one one thing for Councilmember Fuentes. I actually just texted Constable Morales and Chief Bailey, and there's a list, and we'll get it in more details to you for this weekend. But it looks like they're going to go take their team to ACC Highland, Hillcrest Elementary in Dell Valley on Saturday, Nelson Field again, Douglas Landing in Montapolis on Thursday. And then as I get more details on exact times, we'll make sure that Stephanie Hayden gets those to add to that graph. But thanks for that inquiry.
That's great. Thank you, Judge.
Yeah. Assistant City Manager Hayden Howard, can you send that link to that map to all the council offices so that we can promote it, that kind of equity page, so that we make sure we can get that out to people?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We can send it to you. We'll have Bryce to send it to you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else? So with that, Judge, go ahead.
One other item, the FDA has authorized the Pfizer vaccine for 12 to 15. They're just waiting on CDC approval.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner. I think that is everything from our end. Mayor, if you want to.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting today on May 11th, 2021. Time is 10:30. Council, I'll see you this afternoon. We have a special call to be able to identify issues for staff that we want to be part of the after action report on the storm, as well as being present to to answer questions. Check the message board post that Councilmember Togo put up. See you guys.
Stay safe.
Thanks, Mayor. We're gonna adjourn for five minutes to.